Gentlemen, I'd like to call the South Windsor Town Council regular meeting of Monday, March 7th to order. Can I have a pledge of allegiance, please? Uh-oh, no. I'm sorry, I can't. It's gotta be fixed. That's not right. It has to be fixed. I'm sorry. Please, over there, please. JB, can you grab that one for me? Thank you, I'm sorry. Sorry. Military veteran, you gotta have it right, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you. We have new carpet in here, that's why the flag's removed. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, for that. Could I have a roll call, please?
Okay, Counselor Evans?
Here.
Counselor Kibowski?
Here.
Counselor Lopez?
Here.
Counselor Paterna?
Here.
Mayor Pendleton?
Present.
Deputy Mayor King?
Here.
Counselor Kozakowski?
Here.
Counselor Lydecker? And Counselor Gamble?
Here.
Thank you. In our mayor's remarks this evening, I have a special guest joining us that I've asked to come and speak to us, and that would be Ms. MJ, Mary Justine Hockenberry, who is gonna speak to us about what month it is, and we love her speeches on this. No, not yet, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone.
Move your mic over a little bit so we can hear you.
Hello, uh, hello, Madam Mayor, Town Councillors, Town Manager Maniscalco, Assistant Managers, and everyone in the audience, and of course, ours, our Clerk of the Council. Tonight, we celebrate a number of things. First, I'd like to celebrate the birthday of the Constitution, which was on March 4th, 1789. Thank you, Constitution. With that Constitution, I'd like to say happy birthday to the United States Constitution, to the United States of America. Another date in history that happened over 100 years ago, this month, we celebrate women in history. In honor of the month of March, we celebrate women, and specifically, March 8th, celebration of the International Day of Women. What is the history of International Women's Day? A formal recognition internationally started in 1910, when a woman by the name of Clara Zetkin suggested there be a special day of recognition at the International Conference of Working Women in Denmark. This happened in 1911, Austria, Denmark, Germany, and Switzerland celebrated what's regarded as the first International Women's Day. Why do we, why do we celebrate Women's International Day? International Women's Day has become a date to celebrate how far women have come in society, in politics, and in economics, while the political roots of the day mean strikes and protests are organized to raise awareness to continual inequality. Well, I've reached out on many forums, email, Facebook, Instagram, you name it, to ask the South Windsor community which women live here that they feel should be celebrated. First and foremost, and most celebrated, and the most people who picked this name was Daria Plummer. I just have to say Daria, and everyone knows who she is. She's a phenomenal woman, she's a teacher, she's a wife, she's a mother, she's a community advocate, and she loves building schools. And there are many. I will start with a short story for you, which shows women need to praise other women and raise them up, no matter where they are in leadership. There was one, a woman, who started college, in, right after high school. She went to college and ended up meeting a guy, and ended up breaking up and coming home, not graduating from college. She had many dismayed, but ended up marrying, having children, working in the community, a Girl Scout leader, a softball coach, and then had a very bad accident at work. So not only was she working full-time, but she had the extra responsibility of being a mother. This woman had to go to college because she lost her memory. She had a very bad concussion, and the concussion had her go back to college to learn to read and write again. After this dismay, and getting a degree, an associate's degree in mathematics, moving on to another university here in West Hartford, Connecticut, she, at University of St. Joe's, she ended up going into politics. During her last year, she ran for state rep. During this time, she went out door-to-door knocking to families, asking for support of the community. This individual ended up knocking on a door of a woman who had a daughter who went to school with her daughters. She ended up being home, her daughter. She was gonna give up. She was gonna give up on going back to college. It was her first year, and she was like, this is it, I can't do it, as every first year of college is for everyone. So this individual, who had all these, I would say, speed bumps in her life, praised her, raised her, told her she can do this. She ended up going to MCC, like this individual, graduated with high honors, ended up going to ask her for a tour at the University of St. Joseph's, which is where she went. She ended up at this tour, and this individual said, why? Why are you choosing this path? And she said, well, you graduated from MCC, and you made it this far. You graduated from the University of St. Joe's, and I know I can succeed. And then she ended up not only getting her bachelor's, but ended up getting her ma, her master's degree, and she is now a certified social worker, helping other women in family. And this person is Anna Markham, and I celebrate her today. Along with Anna, we have many other members of our community. We stand on millions of women that have come from the past, and we wouldn't be in our positions today without these millions. I come across Elaine Zagorski, who is a nurse and a community volunteer through Catholic churches. Daria Plummer, a teacher, community volunteer, school builder, tutor, neighbor, and friend. Many business owners, Lori Charette, Quality Paving, Kimla Chappell, Max Challenge of South Windsor, Liliana Serrano, who's also part of the Chamber of Commerce. Our first female legionee, legionnaire in our American Legion Guard Post 1033, Rachel Santiago. Dr. Kate Carter, our superintendent. Dr. Anito Alango, Doctor of Molecular and Cell Biology, and also a professor and a member of our Board of Education. We have Dipali Kalia, Madison Gonzalez, Beth Etsman, Jessica Waterhouse, Lisa Meneely, all members of our Board of Education. All of our Girl Scout troops. Rachel Balone, a business owner, as a wedding planner. Loxie Lopez, I call her Junior, got on the honor rolls of the Columbia University 2022. Patricia Botteran, chairperson of Open Space, the Open Space Task Force. Whitney Booker, doctor, gynecologist, worked in New York City during this horrible pandemic. Bonnie Armstrong, our town clerk. Lisa Copper, head of the Girl Scouts in South Windsor. Linda Yakitis, international pilot for 34 years. Girls Network and Malala Fund invest in the education for these women, and more. In every year, there is a theme for the International Day of Women, and this year, the theme for International Women's Day is Gender Equality, Tave Today for a Sustainable Tomorrow. I ask that in the council, be mindful in the policies and decisions made throughout this year to promote climate change adaption, mitigation, and response in order to build a more sustainable future for South Windsor. How will you celebrate women tomorrow in every day? Recently passed, I'd also like to celebrate Marge Glader, who was a daycare, daycare owner for many of our children. I will end with this. I stand on the sacrifices of millions of women before me, thinking, what can I do to make this motivation, to make this mountain taller, so the women after me can see farther. Rupi Kaur, thank you very much. There is a card at each woman's seat from me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, MJ. That was very moving and touching and appreciative. I really appreciate that. So, along with the mayor's remarks this evening, I'd like to first say our prayers for Ukraine and for Russia, and tonight, I have flowers here of yellow and blue with a sunflower in honor of them. I'd also like to say that for our community's strength, with one of our firefighter families, and the Samso family, and to continue to pray for them in complete recovery, and going, everything is going well. I'd also like to mention, on the 12th, in Hartford, there's a St. Patrick's Day Parade. It's been advised that you arrive there for 9:30 because they shut the roads down early, and we are number four in the contingency, which is right at the state capitol. So, South Windsor will be marching in the parade on Saturday. And that's all I have from me, and, let's see, we have adoption of the agenda. Counselor Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion to adopt, adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Paterna. Any additions, deletions?
Madam Mayor, for the night, I'd like to move Sections 13, A, B, and C, the Board of Education budget presentation, the discussion item, as well as the motion to reconsider. After number seven, after public input.
Thank you. Is there any other additions? Counselor Evans?
Thank you. I'd like to add two items to our agenda under new business. One, for a resolution appointing William Myers to the Strategic Planning Committee, and another resolution appointing Lindsay Ruscheck to the Strategic Planning Committee.
And that would end up being Items, number, or letters, I should say, K and L?
13K and 13L, correct.
Thank you. Is there a second on those changes? Okay. All those in favor of the changes to the agenda? Any discussion? Go ahead. Okay, sorry. All those in favor of the changes, say aye? Aye, okay. Any opposed? Not seeing any? The motion carries. Thank you. Communications and reports from the Town Manager, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this point, we've moved all town facilities, in terms of COVID, to a masks recommendation, but not required status. This is consistent with the CDC requirements and the direction we seem to be seeing from the state of Connecticut. We're moving to a more passive monitoring situation with COVID-19 moving forward, so I will not be providing you with regular updates related to numbers and everything else at this point. And then lastly, the town still has masks for public use. If any businesses are interested, they can reach out to emergency management using the online portal. And then one last piece, not in your written report, is that we are still holding public testing events at Avery Street Church, with the most recent one actually being today. For updates on that information, go to the Department of Public, or the town's public health website. In your, on the table this, this evening, I provided you all with a picture, a rendering of what could be for a welcome sign at the Route 5 and Sullivan Avenue intersection. There's a few residents in town who would, who are funding that privately and are looking for your nod and approval in terms of putting that in. I think they're ready to move forward with something as soon as they can, so I think they're looking for feedback from all of you related to that. I know this was brought forward to all of you in a letter a while back, but I did have somebody reach out recently. In terms of our tax collection, we are right in line with where we need to be, and actually doing a little bit better than last year for this time of year. Overall, we're at 97.87% collected, as compared to last year at 97.64% collected, so that's pretty good, moving forward with that. Also, we've been having pretty regular conversations related to our building department and regionalization efforts associated with our building department. We continue to provide mutual aid to both the towns of Windsor and East Windsor. Both of them have slightly different needs. We're trying to figure out how that works out, and how that's gonna play out. And that being said, for all of our members in the community and taxpayers, for the work that is being provided to those two communities, the town of South Windsor is getting paid back dollar-for-dollar of what's being expended, so there's no impact on our taxpayers locally. Also, wanted to just draw your attention to the budget. We have a budget calendar in your, in your packet. We are gonna be getting into that process pretty soon. Myself and the staff have been working pretty hard on getting that all put together, and things are coming together pretty well, so hopefully we'll be able to start moving forward with the budget process shortly. And then lastly, something not in the written report, I just wanted to recognize the staff of the Department of Public Works, ASM, and the Police Department for their lifesaving efforts last week, uh, over at the beginning of the weekend. They did a very valiant effort and did a great job at saving lives, so very appreciative of their work, and we're very fortunate as a community to have them. And that is all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Counselor Paterna?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco, for the report. I just want to call your attention to an item as part of your report on page eight for the, from the Finance Department. And my concern is that about two years ago, the council passed this, if you see that chart, for seniors 65 and over for tax credits. We passed the local option two for single persons, and also local option two for married couples. So I'm just wondering how we're getting that word out, and is there a possibility of doing some kind of mailing to seniors in town to let them know this is available?
Let me, let me talk with the Human Services Director to see if I could come up with some other ideas, because I'm, I'm sure she'll have some, some better avenues into that specific subset of our community. And I'll get back to you.
Counselor Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Maniscalco. I, I do have a question about the regional building department efficiencies you're trying to work through. Can you give a little bit more detail? I couldn't quite catch, like, the types of things you were working on.
Yeah, so essentially, what's happened is the communities of Windsor and East don't have chief building officials currently at this time. Every municipality in the state of Connecticut is required to assign a, a chief building official at some point, and it's actually a process. You have to send a letter to the state of who you're actually assigning, and that individual has to go through certain classes and licensure and all that sort of stuff. So, currently, both communities had reached out to us, since we do have a chief building official looking for some mutual aid help in order to kind of fill that gap in the interim period. That being said, the town of Windsor, I believe, has gone out twice already for looking for chief building officials. The town of East Windsor's in the process. Both are not coming up with a lot of luck. I think, fortunate for us, chief building officials are a little bit hard to come by right now. I know the state had actually shut down the training program during COVID for training people and licensing them as chief building officials moving forward. So, part of the conversation we're having is, is there a way to regionalize our chief building official to somewhat oversee all, all three of those departments, and then have some regional inspectors that might work within cer, certain ones of those departments as well?
Thanks. So, I, I remember you talking about, we were doing some IT services for another town, but that's not, are we still doing that?
Yes, we, so we do provide IT services for, I believe, it's about five towns.
But not these two that you're referring to?
Not these two, no.
And then, just quickly, I, I was looking through the report, and the refuse in recycling, and thank you very much for the electronic recycling this past Saturday. Those are Godsend. So, I remember at one point, we were talking about, like, distributing different colored garbage bags and, and, and doing some sort of different garbage collection, and I haven't really heard much about that lately. Is that still something that's going to be happening? Or what is the status?
My understanding is that is going to be happening. That is gonna be a, a pilot program that's gonna come out through the state at some point, so we're kind of waiting on hearing from the state. We've got our application in. It's gonna only be targeted at certain neighborhoods, so once we do, once we do hear back from the state in that process, we'll be able to move forward with that.
Thanks, and I, I do like the sign. I think it's very attractive.
That's very helpful.
I'm giving a nod for the sign. It's very nice.
Thank you, Counselor Gamble. Counselor Evans?
I just wanted to note, on page 16, a little glimpse of the John J. Mitchell Fairground sign, which I know the naming committee will be very excited to see go up. So, I'm just wondering if we had any estimate of when that might happen, or if we could kind of get some, a heads-up of when it is going to be installed, especially so we can let the family know for attending your, any type of event we might have for this?
I'll certainly get you some heads-up information as to when they plan to install it. I know it's been waiting just because of the current weather situation, so I'm sure with the weather kind of breaking over the next couple days, maybe that'll be on the list of things to get done.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I agree with Counselor Gamble. I do like the sign as well. I think it's very classy. I would like to ask, who is going to maintain this lovely grass and everything that's in front of it?
Right now, that's private property, so that would not be the town.
So, being that it's private property, there's no way to make sure that it's maintained?
Correct. Outside of our blade ordinance and the normal requirements that we impose upon people.
Okay. Again, I agree with Counselor Gamble. I like the way that that looks. The, the only other thing that I have to comment on in regards to your report is with the Public Works Department. I know that we'll have Mr. Stetson up here later, however, I just wanted to shout he and his team out for all the snow and the weather and all that's been popping off, you know, sometimes very unexpectedly. We go to bed, next thing we know, we wake up, and you might not even know that it snowed, or whatever. I know there's one time that they, they definitely did hit my driveway after I shoveled it, so I was pissed off about that. But, outside of that, I was very happy and pleased with how our streets were taken care of. I was concerned, especially- of. I was concerned, especially with that last one, because it kind of came out of nowhere, but they took care of it, and I know that they were up throughout the week, weekend and the night and everything, so shout out to them.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor King. I would like to go back just for a minute to Counselor Paterna, just to speak a little bit about the, for the rest of the citizens of our community concerning the sixty-five and older taxes that he was mentioning earlier, that it's detailed in our report. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just want to point out so that people don't make the wrong assumption that you, in order to be eligible for this option two, you have to be sixty-five years old or older by December thirty-first of 2021. You have to own your own home. You must reside in your South Windsor home, and there are certain income limits that are also part of this chart. So there are some requirements, but still, there may be many more people who are eligible who haven't been aware or haven't applied for the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Paterna. And what I have this evening is first and foremost, I'd like to say thank you to the town staff, also to DPW, the police, and ASM for their lifesaving and heroic efforts over the weekend. They are truly appreciated in our community. And Mr. Maniscalco, the other thing that I have for you is, I know around budget time, we ask about the ECS funding, and that comes in, I'm not sure if that's quarterly or something like that, but if you could bring us up to speed on that?
Yeah, I believe we typically get two payments, if not quarterly payments. I know that we've got our first payment. I'll have to check on the second one and when that's coming in, but I can certainly get you some more detailed information for your next meeting.
I think that's around April timeframe. I'm not sure. And then, speaking of the sign and Sullivan Avenue, in speaking with Mr. Shepherd, I know that he's looking for input on this. What is it that they would like from us? Would they like a, a letter from us? Would they like a consensus? What, what do you think they want?
I think just if there's a consensus from the council, I think he'd be happy to move forward with that. I know that it was brought forward at one other time before, and I think, you know, as normal, when something's presented, we just kind of sit there and accept it and say thank you, and I think they're looking just for any feedback you might have. If you like it, don't like it, have huge issues with it.
We know for a fact that this picture that you've given us, which is the South, it doesn't say "Welcome to South Windsor," so South Windsor settled in, my glasses on sixteen.
Sixteen thirty-three.
There you go. Okay, sixteen thirty-three, but it doesn't say "Welcome to South Windsor." Do you know for a fact that this is exactly what they're going to be putting there?
Yes, this is what was provided by them.
Okay. So if we can get a consensus with a thumbs up to Mr. Maniscalco to spread the word over to the Historical Society, I believe, is doing this?
I think it's a combination of a number of people. It's not just the Historical Society.
Thumbs up, everybody?
I see nods and thumbs up, so.
All right, you got a full thumbs up. So there you go, Mr. Maniscalco.
It's an official thumb up.
Any other questions for the town manager? Not seeing any. We'll move on to public input, item number seven, please. Public input shall not exceed thirty minutes. When recognized by the mayor, the speaker shall approach the lectern, give your name and address. The speaker shall avoid personal attacks or impugning or alleging any improper motive to any person. The speakers may address the council on any item on the agenda, and the speaker shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council this evening? Please come forward. Good evening, Mr. Edwards. No, there you go.
There we go. Hello, everyone. Dan Edwards, one thirty-one Hilton Drive. Thank you all for your service on the council. It's nice not to have to stand behind Megadesk. Several years ago, I spoke in front of the town council and made an appeal to have the meeting materials posted with, with the agenda. For a short time, I noticed changes made, such that there were meeting materials attached, and this was great. It was aligned with the contemporary towns that are often mentioned on as reasons we should do things or expand based on what other towns are doing. Not only that, we also have a stellar Board of Education in town that regularly has all their meeting materials attached to the agenda, which is great. People in town are asking for more transparency. Let's give it to them. As one example, the first agenda that came out was thirty-four pages. Today's is six. No attachments. And again, I realize that we're running short staff, but still, let's strive to be better as we look to re-staff that town clerk. Second, speaking in support of Phil Richards and Lindsay Ruscheck's appointment to the Strategic Planning Committee, of the four that are on today's agenda, those two are the actually only true representatives of the majority of folks or voters in town, unaffiliated, and I have high hopes for them. And then lastly, just following up on my comments at the last town council meeting, where I spoke about my concerns about disinformation camp, disinformation campaign by a high-ranking member of the town council. As citizens, you have to remember that we look to you guys for guidance, right? We also look for you not to, to mislead us. We have a great town. We have a growing town. And if history has shown anything, is that if we move too fast, we make mistakes. We spend more money than we have to than if we had actually slowed down. All I ask is that, listen, if you have things or you want to speak on certain things, do it on your own personal pages. Don't do it on your mayor, mayor, councillor pages. It's just not the best thing. It's not the best look. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Anyone else like to speak on public input? Good evening, Mr. Kennedy.
Joe Kennedy, eighty-one Allison Drive. I'd like to thank the councillors for their service and their dedication to the town. They are not paid. That's one disinformation that everyone thinks they're paid. They spend a lot of time as liaisons to the commissions and boards, and they also express the concerns and suggestions that they get from the citizens. Secondly, as the Chair of the Agricultural Commission, I'd like to thank the council for passing our revised Code of Ordinance, and there basically was two changes and some little changes. First change was a name change. We went from South Windsor Agricultural Land Preservation Agricultural Commission, or Small PAC, to the Agricultural Commission, and then we also put an item in where we look for federal, state, and private funds to help improve town-owned lands. I'd like to also say, the Ag Commission with four other groups and the town council and the town manager, we preserved over nine hundred acres of land. Those other commissions are Open Space, the Zoning Board, Inland Wetlands, the Ag Commission, and Land Trust. So these people have done a good job. Not only that, I mean, especially if you go down Sullivan Avenue, you've got the Donnelly property, then you've got the Priest Farm, and then you've got Wapping Park, and that's on the main drag. There's not too many towns with their main drag to get so much open space, and the people are doing a great job. And then we also have two community gardens, one off of Avery Street and one off of Demming Street, and then we also promote the farmer's market. I could give a shout out to Counselor Paterna. He started the farmer's market. He gave all his credit to his volunteers, and now the parking rec is running it, and they're doing a great job. So I, I'd like to end by saying, please support your local businesses, your farm stands, and the farmer market. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any other comments this evening in public input for anything on the agenda? One more time, anyone like to speak to the council concerning anything on the agenda? Not seeing anyone. One more time, anyone like to speak concerning anything on the agenda? Not seeing anyone. We will move on. We will now go into, let's see, we're moving to the Board of Education Budget Presentation.
Craig Zimmerman, five A Mato Drive, the Chairman of the Board of Ed, Mayor Pendleton, Deputy Mayor King, the remaining town council members, and Town Manager Maniscalco. As the Chairman of the Board of Education, I wanted to make a few comments on our proposed budget for the next school year before turning things over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Carter, who will make the main budget presentation tonight. On behalf of the entire Board of Education, I'm proud to champion our Board of Ed-approved budget. It's not only fiscally responsible, but also fulfills our role as advocates for continuing to provide the best possible education to each of our students. More about that shortly. Please remember that over the last several years, decisions to limit spending that helped to lower our per, per pupil expenditures have already been made on a bipartisan basis. As I've said in the past, while budget discussions are often about dollars spent and potential tax increases, we should also remember that the education we provide to each of our students every day not only has a proud effect on their futures, but it indicates our priorities, what we as individuals and as a town think is important. At most of our meetings, we have the opportunity to see firsthand the great work, the magic, as Dr. Carter likes to say, being done in our classrooms each and every day. Student at all ages, age levels come and show us what they're working on. As an example, I spent part of my day today watching, reviewing, and judging some of the elementary school STEM inventions, hearing directly from the students. It was easy to see how much they have learned. Their enthusiasm for their individual inventions, for their STEM, and for school was exciting, and just another example of the importance of the work done by all of our teachers and staff. The other Board of Education members and I are looking forward to working with our school administration and each of you to continue our excellence in our schools. I also want to take this public opportunity on behalf of the entire Board of Ed to thank all of our administrators, teachers, and staff for their remarkable efforts and performance during this once-in-a-lifetime pandemic. While the list of people who deserve individual recognition is too long for acknowledgement tonight, hopefully they all continue to understand just how much they are both respected and appreciated. Two facts that greatly affected the budget we are bringing you tonight. Number one, we continue to be the fastest-growing school district in our, in our DURG, and one of the fastest in the entire state. For example, we gained five hundred and thirty-nine students in just the last four years, from two thousand seventeen to this year, and are currently scheduled to add another five hundred and eighteen students in just the next four years, from this year to two thousand twenty-five. In addition, as we've told you over the last couple of years, we have to transition away from overrelying on using reserve funds to reduce the amount of our budget paid for by current tax dollars, assuming that we want to reduce the cliff or larger-than-necessary spending increase coming in the near future. The fact that more families want to live in our town is a testament to, among other things, our high-quality school system, our diversified housing stock, our recreational opportunities, and your leadership. The entire board and I are looking forward to discussing our budget with you at our joint online meeting on Wednesday, March twenty-third, at seven P. M. That actually could be wrong. Are we in person? I, I apologize. It is now my great pleasure to turn things over to Dr. Carter. Thank you.
We'll see you there, Craig. I guess we're doing a PowerPoint? Yes, so we need to move our seat so we can see it. It's going to be behind us.
Good evening, Mayor Pendleton, Deputy Mayor King, and members of the council. I am pleased to present to you the Board of Education's proposed budget for fiscal year 2023. The proposed new appropriation for FY23 is eighty-one million, eight hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and forty dollars, representing a four-point-nine-five percent increase over last year's appropriation. The new appropriation, coupled with the use of one-point-nine million dollars in reserve funds, equates to a total expenditure plan of eighty-three million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Let's take a look at some of the main drivers within the budget. The overarching drivers of the budget increase fall into one of four categories: costs associated with contractual obligations and maintenance of operations, increasing enrollment, special education, and strategic planning. In the first category, the largest driver is contractual salary increases. In addition, this category includes costs associated with healthcare, pension, technology, and general district operations. The second category represents expenses associated with increasing enrollment. It includes two additional classroom teachers at the elementary level, an additional nurse and English learner teacher at Eli Terry, as well as an associate principal at Philip R. Smith School. It also includes an instructional coach at the middle school and a science teacher at the high school. Both of our secondary schools will need an additional social worker. There are also facilities expenditures associated with our increasing enrollment, which includes work at Wapping School so that it can serve as an annex to the high school to accommodate its projected growth. The third category represents special education funding to meet IEP requirements and other mandated programming, such as special education transportation costs. The final category represents costs associated with strategic planning initiatives and other program improvements. This category includes two positions to support safe schools through resources for family engagement and a positive school climate, as well as an additional safety officer. The rollout of a safety, of safety officers at the elementary level began this year as a pilot at Pleasant Valley, and the plan is to add one safety officer a year to each elementary school, starting with Orchard Hill next year. Finally, this category represents a very limited amount of funds for addressing what is a much larger-scale issue, the lack of air conditioning and ventilation at the high school. A detailed summary of the costs of the initiatives in all four categories can be found on page four of the budget book. With the infusion of over a billion dollars of American Rescue Plan elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds across the state, you have likely heard the phrase "funding cliff" when it comes to these federal grant dollars. With some neighboring districts receiving five, ten, or even twenty million dollars, there is concern that they will face a significant budget shortfall when the money dries up in September 2024. South Windsor did not receive the higher funding levels that some surrounding towns did, so our funding cliff related to ARP-ESR is less steep. Specifically, the FY23 budget only utilizes seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars in ARP-ESR funds. This, coupled with the fact that I intentionally directed most of those expenditures to one-time-only expenses, should allow us to mitigate the ARP-ESR cliff in FY24. There is a different funding cliff, however, to which I must continue to draw your attention. Last year, you heard me urge town leaders to be clear-eyed when it comes to the use of reserve funds, and I continue to reinforce this message. Before I outline a plan for phasing out reliance on reserve funds, let's take a look at why our reserve funds have grown. First and foremost, the board's longstanding stewardship of maintaining appropriate reserve levels is certainly part of the equation. However, these reserves have increased beyond the needed levels as a result of COVID-19. It may seem counterintuitive, but the pandemic has generated savings. For example, in FY20, schools were shut down for over three months, and this generated over a million dollars in savings and just salaries and transportation alone. In that same year, our healthcare claims came in lower than projected, which launched a pattern that continues. In FY21, our healthcare budget costs were once again lower than projected due to underutilization during the pandemic. This resulted in our healthcare reserve increasing by one-point-two million dollars. Currently, the bus driver shortage stands as another example of pandemic savings, although I can assure you, it is not welcomed savings. It is, it is an operational hardship for students, staff, and families. The hardship notwithstanding, the bus driver shortage has generated to date two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in savings. savings. Now that we understand the source of increased revenues, let's look at a plan for utilizing them responsibly and sustainably. As previously stated, the spending plan for FY23 utilizes $1.9 million in reserve funds. While the use of reserve funds can have the short-term benefit of lowering taxes, it can also have the long-term consequence of creating a funding cliff. This can be effectively managed as long as we take a long-term view and use reserves responsibly. To that end, I am requesting an appropriation this year that puts us on a path to becoming increasingly less reliant on reserve funds. Last year, the FY22 spending plan called for the utilization of approximately 2.7 million in reserves. This year, I am recommending a FY23 spending plan that utilizes 1.9, a reduction in the reliance on reserves by $825,000. Next year, you can expect a recommended spending plan that utilizes even fewer reserve dollars in order to slowly close the gap between appropriation and reserves. The 4.95% increase was the lowest increase in appropriation that I felt I could responsibly recommend. Those looking to hasten our departure from overreliance on reserve funds might argue that the percentage increase in the Board of Education's budget should be higher. I would agree, but I proposed an increase in appropriation that I thought could be supported by our town leaders while still putting us on a path of thoughtfully reducing reliance on reserves. It is important that our community understands that the use of reserves can mask the true cost of operating the school district. If we simply use the reserves to keep taxes artificially low, then we are deferring the true tax impact to future years. This eventually creates a spike in taxes and one that was clearly foreseeable. As a result, I urged the Town Council to support the Board of Education's decision to maintain the appropriation level request at the proposed 4.95% increase. Reductions to the proposed appropriation request only leave a steeper cliff to address in the future. It is important to view the use of reserve funds through the unique lens of South Windsor's increasing enrollment. Closing the gap between new appropriation and reserve usage is much easier within a context of declining or even flat enrollment, but the task becomes more challenging when keeping pace with increased staffing needs and other enrollment-driven costs. In other words, in response to increasing enrollment, budgets must go up just to maintain current levels of service. Let's take a look at our enrollment data. As you can see, our demographers have yet to forecast a downturn in our enrollment between now and 2031. They are projecting that our district will increase by 17.1% in the next 10 years, adding an additional 813 students. Our current K-5 enrollment is the highest it has been since 2004. By 2026, our K-5 enrollment is projected to peak and then stabilize for the next five This next slide provides you with historical data and projected enrollment for grades 6 through 8. Next year, TE is projected to have the highest enrollment since the year 2000. Between now and 2029, TE is expected to increase by an additional 305 students, followed by the first signs of a downturn in the year 2030. South Windsor High School has had relatively stable enrollment for the past decade and is now poised to feel the effects of our enrollment surge, which began first at our elementary schools. Over the next 10 years, South Windsor High School is projected to increase by 478 students. Over the past five years, K-5 enrollments have increased by 23.4%. The total K-12 enrollment has increased by 13.9%. Over the next 10 years, demographers project we will grow by an additional 17.1%. This next slide demonstrates that South Windsor is clearly an outlier in comparison to other Hartford County DURG-B towns. Five of the other six towns experienced either a declining or flat enrollment at the K-5 level, with only one town showing an increase. South Windsor stands in stark contrast with a 23.4% increase in its K-5 population and a 13.9% increase in its K-12 population between 2016 and 2021. It should be noted that when discussing increasing enrollment, it is not just the sheer number of students to consider, but the intensity of student needs. To support these needs, we have included two additional social workers in the operational budget, as well as an additional school psychologist to be grant-funded. These positions are needed to meet the increasing demands associated with mental health. Since September, we have received three times more mental health referrals than in each of the five previous school years. Another example of increasing intensity of needs can be seen within our English learner population. Since 2011, we have grown from 89 English learner students to 373. Last year, the district exited 56 students from the program, which illustrates that the program is highly effective in helping students make gains. However, since the first day of school this year, 103 new students requiring EL services have enrolled in the district. This illustrates that as quickly as students may be exiting, a new and larger cohort of students emerges. In response, the proposed budget calls for an additional English learner teacher to support our growing English learner needs. It may be of interest to note that 63 different languages are spoken in our students' homes. Our continued efforts to bend the cost curve are evident in the recently published comparisons of education spending by town. For the fourth consecutive year, the number of districts that spend more per pupil than South Windsor has increased. South Windsor's FY2021 net current expenditures per pupil, NCEP, is lower than the state average, and for the second consecutive year, has the lowest NCEP in the entire DURG-B category. This next slide shows the progression of our DURG ranking for NCEP since 2019. As you can see, this progression demonstrates the following. In 2019, 16 districts in our DURG spent more per pupil than South Windsor. In 2020 and 2021, all of the other 20 districts in our DURG spent more per pupil than South Windsor. The five-year lookback of a statewide analysis is even more compelling. You can see a steadily increasing number of districts are spending more per pupil than South Windsor. In 2021, only 12 towns out of 166 spent less per pupil than South Windsor, with 153 districts spending more per pupil than South Windsor. Said another way, 92% of school districts spent more per pupil than South Windsor. That is worth repeating. 92% of school districts spent more per pupil than South Windsor. This is important context for supporting the appropriation request in full. Clearly, the Board of Education has been an excellent financial steward, but we must face the reality of the rising costs associated with being among the fastest-growing school districts in the state. The 2% or 3% budget increases I have proposed in the past simply won't meet the needs of our growing district. Before I close out this presentation, I would like to celebrate an invisible asset that we rarely talk about, but should. One of the assets that allows the town of South Windsor to be such a successful community is the excellent working relationship between town staff and Board of Education staff. It may seem like a small thing, but I can assure you, it is an asset not commonly found in all communities. Often, there are forces that pit one team against the other. Silly turf wars or fighting over resources is often the norm, using manufactured riffs to serve as a distraction from the real work. This unfortunate dynamic is not only a disservice to the staff, but it hurts the taxpayer when departments do not work together effectively and efficiently. As a result, a budget presentation seems the appropriate context to take a moment to recognize our town colleagues, many of whom have contributed to this positive relationship for years, and in some cases, decades. As superintendent of schools, I have always appreciated it when members of our community reach out to share appreciation for our team. It is my pleasure to share my appreciation with Town Manager Mike Maniscalco and the Town Council as a whole for their leadership team. We could not operate our schools safely without working together as a team with the Police Department, Fire Department, Fire Marshal's Office, and of course, most recently in the pandemic, the Health Department. Chief Lindstrom, Deputy Chief Ekblum, Fire Chief Cooney, Fire Marshal Walt Summers, and Director Heather Otis are all people I feel fortunate to call colleagues and friends. The Human Services Department, led by Andrea Coke-Francesco, supports many of our school's community service projects, as well as our partnership with youth and family. The 10-year elementary facilities plan could not unfold without the support of the Planning Department, the Engineering Department, Environmental Planning Department, Town Clerk's Office, and the Finance Department. Michelle Leip, Jeff Doolittle, Jeff Folger, Bonnie Armstrong, and Patty Perry are all part of the success of our 10-year plan, and I feel fortunate to have worked with them since the adoption of this plan. Clearly, the leadership of Assistant Town Managers Vanessa Perry and Scott Roberts is also to be recognized as they support all of the aforementioned town departments. Finally, the Parks and Rec Department intersects with the school district in countless ways as they use our buildings to support 4th R, summer camps, youth sports, adult leagues, pickleball, and so many other activities our residents enjoy. John Caldwell is a gem, and has been a pleasure to see Darrell Crowley carry on Pat Hankard's legacy of collaborating with John to ensure their respective departments work well together. And I am already impressed by our new Director of Parks and Recreation, Molly Keys, who's an outstanding addition to the team. I say all of this to make public my commitment to carry on this important tradition. Without question, the pandemic has presented incredible challenges, but I know we will get through it together as a team if we continue to foster a workplace culture for both town and board staff that promotes trust, teamwork, open communication, respect, and a joint mission to serving the South Windsor community to the best of our collective abilities. Finally, tonight, I would be remiss if I did not remind us of who this budget ultimately serves. Thus, I conclude this presentation with images of our amazing school community. It's easy to get caught up in numbers and percentages during a budget presentation, but we must remember who those numbers and percentages represent. Behind DURG rankings and NCEP calculations, healthcare claim statistics, state mandates, and enrollment projections are human beings, the people we serve, specifically our students, staff, and families. Thank you, and I look forward to working with the Board of Education and the Town Council to deliver an outstanding education to the children and families of South Windsor.
Thank you, Dr. Carter, for your wonderful presentation, and thank you, Board of Ed, for your hard work, and Dr. Carter, and your Finance Department for putting all of this together and bringing this forward to us. And this evening, I'd ask the council to save their questions about the particular budget until we have the work session, the joint work session with the Board of Ed. However, if you have questions concerning the PowerPoint presentation, I'd be more than happy to entertain those for Dr. Carter if you have any questions concerning that. None? I do. Sorry, I do. I don't know. Dr. Carter, on page 12, if you could. I just saw something. I didn't know what it meant. There's a number 1 above the year 2031. Oh, that's where the... Got it. Never mind, I see the connection. Got it now. Saw it in the little bar. And then on the page 17 with the 16,668 that we're spending per student? I believe it's page 17. Yes. That includes all the... When you say what we're spending per student, I'm looking at that, and to me, that's a low number compared to the other towns in our DURG and everything else, but that includes... How does that number come together? How do you come up with that number, please?
So, that is not a number that our team comes up with. That is a state-provided number. It's a pretty complicated calculation to determine NCEP, but in order to make sure that towns can make comparisons, the state calculates your NCEP based on a variety of calculations, so that every town is applying the same calculation to their per-pupil spending. I do know it can sometimes sound like a misnomer, that some people think they can take the budget, divide it by the number of students, and then that must be your per-pupil spending. I can assure you that it would probably need several state employees to come here to explain the complexities of how they come up with NCEP, but they do do it the same calculation, and that's how you make the comparison state within the state.
So, they look at our budget as a whole as part of the formula that they do to come up with the number per student?
They do. There are things that are included, things that are excluded. There's a whole formula that they apply to any particular Board of Ed's budget, but it is much more complicated than simply taking what the appropriation was and divided by the number of kids.
Okay, so it's not just programming, but it's salaries too, correct? That's included? Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions concerning the PowerPoint? None? Well, thank you, Dr. Carter, for coming and presenting this evening. And the Board of Ed, thank you. We look forward to having our joint meeting with you. Appreciate it. Stay well. Moving on in our agenda, we are now on 13B, which is a presentation on the future road work by Vincent Stetson, Department of Public Works, please. Do we have another PowerPoint?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and fellow councilors, for having us. Very, very excited to introduce to you the South Windsor Paving for Progress Plan. Thank you for your patience. So, very excited to share what, in essence, is a constant explanation of where our road infrastructure currently is today and how we manage and forecast budgetary needs for road maintenance. Roads are by far the most expensive asset in town. There's roughly $300 million to repave them all if we redo them all at once. And it's important to note that this doesn't include all the infrastructure underground like Storm Sewer that is also aging and needs to be addressed before repaving a road. The plan we're about to share with you is subject to change and will always be a moving target. It's a live document, and it should be understood that after five years, this is a 135 paving plan, that there will be another rendition of this plan, because as we age, so do our roads, and they need to be serviced in some sort of fashion approximately every 15 to 20 years. I'm not going to touch upon every aspect of this pavement management here, but would like to briefly highlight some important aspects. And this plan will be up on the town website and shared through social media at some point tomorrow, so residents can take their time to become more acquainted with the data at their leisure. And here we go. There's an introduction bar here that kind of goes over the town, some of its metrics. There's 142 miles of road, the time that we took to invest in VHB, and it really covers the gamut, soup to nuts, about what is pavement management, what our existing conditions here are in town, and what have we been doing in the past and what we hope to do in the future. Payment management is a balance between budget constraints and viability of road preservation techniques, i.e. getting the biggest bang for your buck. You folks may be familiar with this curve. You folks may be familiar with this curve. This is a cost-of-deferred maintenance graph, which kind of explains how, the longer we wait, the more expensive it costs for our roads to repair. There is audio for this little film here. This is a very good explanatory video about chip sealing, and some of you may already be familiar with this content. Chip sealing, as I know, is not a very popular exercise in town, but it has saved the town countless of millions over the years preserving and extending the life cycle of our roads as opposed to milling and filling, which is prohibitively expensive based on historical budget limits. There's a lot of data on how this all gets quantified and measured. They look for different kinds of pavement distress. It goes into an equation, and it calculates the PCI. As my predecessor always tried to instill in us, you can't manage what you don't measure, and this plan is a testament to that philosophy. And here are some various examples of pavement conditions that can be found in town. Nevers Road is an example of a roadway that we don't need to do nothing, anything with. Chief Ryan Way is an example of routine maintenance. Lippman Drive is an example of preventative maintenance. Clark Street is an example of a roadway in the structural improvement treatment band. And Kent Lane is an example of a roadway that needs to be completely rehabilitated. As you can see, there is a lot that I'm kind of glazing over here, and I don't want to bury you guys in the details, so please feel free to play with this. There's a lot of aspects to it. Here's the historical PCI average. There is a lot of correlation between funding levels and this steep drop here. Here is a summary of investments over the years. You'll see a lot of this is a combination of bond and grant funds. Here's a graph of the current PCI distribution around town. We have about 30% in really good condition and about maybe 40% in the 78.5 to 0% range. Here is a backlog of work. This would be to get all of our PCI up into a high average. And I personally find this pretty neat. You can zoom in, and you can click on a road. Oops, sorry. It had to go this way. So, this gives you an estimated cost to repair and what the recommended repair is, and the other section of it. Here are some recent projects that we've been taking care of in the past couple of years or two. South Satellite Road had sidewalks put in, was narrowed. We saved quite a bit of money by changing the design of that. And in essence, this is where the plan is, the paving for progress. It's five years of roadwork that's been laid out, and residents and yourselves can zoom in on the roads that we're planning on doing in the very near future here. You'll see here you have lines that are funded. So, this summer, we'll be doing Buckland Road and Bezzelbub Road, and after that, we have partially funded Pleasant Valley Road. Any roadwork beyond that, funding will be necessary to make this plan come to fruition. But when we figure out how to do that, we will be paving these neighborhoods. And I think I mentioned before, this is all subject to change. I anticipate a lot of folks asking why their road isn't done first, and we do this to get the most bang for our buck. On Friday, we had the incident at the town garage, and I just wanted to give a shout Like I said in the beginning, sometimes it doesn't make sense to repair the worst streets out not only to the staff that were there and made it all happen, but we need to recognize first. That's because of local traffic levels, the amount of houses that are on there, and the conditions of roads that see 30,000 to 40,000 cars per day. the training that comes from the town. All of us go through defibrillator training, CPR training, and I know personally the folks You can't really let those roads go. that responded to that were also firefighters as well, but that's a big testament to the Here's the Buckland Road paving rehabilitation project, Pleasant Valley Road. town, how well they take care of their employees, and I just want to highlight that down at the town garage, we're not just all public works, it's also a Park and Recs department. Pleasant Valley Road Bridge is also going to be included in part of that project. And a good contingent of the folks that responded and saved Jay Sampson's life there were the And here is a breakdown of the budget analysis. Park and Recs fellows, and just want to give them a shout out. Again, this is a digital plan.
Thank you, Mr. Stetson. Thank you for your presentation.
It doesn't really comport too well to printed text, and I look forward to you guys getting
Is there any way that the council could get copies of the slides that you just presented this evening besides these two maps that you've given us?
a chance to play with it and working together to figure out a way to fund this paving for
There's a few things in those that I wanted us to read.
Yep, absolutely. progress plan. So, we're hoping that with your blessing, we'll be able to publish this plan on the town website and social media so all residents can review all the information, get familiar with how we're measuring the data, collecting the data, how we've spent money in the past, how we plan to spend money in the future.
And we also have had that presentation over the years where the town has done an analysis of the roads to figure out which ones get paved next or which ones in need of repair and so on and so forth. So, thank you for presenting that to us, and if there's a financial game plan that you have to fund any of this, or if there's a way that you have ideas on how to fund the street maintenance, I guess, that would be something to maybe present to Mr. Maniscalco, and he could present it to the council so we have a better understanding, and the town also has a better understanding. The citizens have an understanding of what it takes to maintain our roads and keep our roads up. So, that would be great. Is there any councilors that have questions? Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Stetson. Very impressive presentation, and I would ask Mr. Maniscalco that when this does get published on the website, if you could just send the councilors a link directly to it because I'll never remember where it is on the website.
We certainly will. We will get it published tomorrow and send that out tomorrow.
Thank you. So, do we have a town drone? How did that fly over work? I never...
So, this is a natural evolution of the VHB plan that Mayor Pendleton was mentioning, and we hired them for a small sum to help us put together this plan. And while I'm giving shout-outs, I'd like to give the VHB team Joshua Ananati, Angela Bisbee, Gordon Darling. Jeff Doolittle had a lot of help in making this all happen. Certainly wasn't done on my own.
No, I mean, that wasn't my main question. I was just, I like the drone flyover. So, you said our PCI averages, did you say 81 or something like that?
I believe so.
And then if we spend the $36 million, that would increase our PCI to what number was it? Or did you have a...
So, there's a bunch of different numbers that are being thrown around there. Specifically, we're hoping to propose is somewhere around the $20 million mark to make this plan happen for five years. $4 million of that would go towards roadwork, and $1 million would go towards all the drainage.
Gotcha. So, what's like the biggest factor in the deterioration of our roads? Is it just age? Is it use? Is it size of vehicles? What is the biggest deterioration that you can see that makes roads erode faster, slower, or how that...
It all starts with how the road's built. It needs to be built correctly with proper compaction. The mix needs to be correct. The state keeps tweaking the asphalt mixes, and you'll see sometimes on major highways where they just didn't get it quite right, it starts to unravel, come apart. Obviously, traffic counts has a really big impact on it. You know, even the size of the vehicle that is traveling down the road can impact the road, how old the road is. Main Street is one of the oldest roads in town. That is several layers of chip sealed deep. That does not take heavy traffic very well, and you'll start to see the running and whatnot. The sun does a lot of damage, freeze thaw cycles, not doing preventative maintenance like the cracked ceiling. If you get a road that gets all alligator cracked, and you get water that gets down into it and it freezes, it'll just delaminate the road.
And so, are there different mixtures that you put together based on the traffic of the road? Like if, you know, it was Peachtree Lane, you wouldn't have like the super duper mixture in other roads like Clark Street, you would have different...
Yeah, there's class one, class two mix. There's several different mixes, and you can even design a specific one. We just had cores taken on Buckland Road just to make sure that we're going down far enough with the milling, making sure we're going to put back the right mix. So, there is definitely a science to it.
All right. So, the more traffic, the heavier traffic, then the stronger the mix has to be, and which costs...
And the thicker it needs to be.
Okay. That's it. Great presentation. I'm looking forward to seeing it online.
Yes.
Hopefully tomorrow.
Counselor Kazakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question. Where, with these cost estimates that you're providing, which, you know, is kind of helpful as we can scroll through the town and use that map, but where does the sidewalks, maintenance, and new installations factor in to those estimates?
That is a great question. So, Pleasant Valley Road, there is no sidewalks there. That is built into that project. I know that there's a fund out there for sidewalk maintenance. It is not funded as stately as it could be. There, you know, I think there was a decision made maybe 10 years ago or so to take sidewalk maintenance off the plates of the residents and to take that responsibility on as a town. And it's just a matter of getting ahead of that curve because, once we decided to do that, there is a pretty big backlog of work out there. Again, sidewalks, once you put them in, they don't stay fine forever. They start moving around. You get trip hazards, puddles, frozen areas and whatnot. So, this paving for progress plan, it might touch upon some new sidewalks being put in, but it's not part of the sidewalk program at all. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, councilors. Mr. Stetson, you said Pleasant Valley Road is partially funded. Where is the other partially funded going to come from?
We are going to work as a team to figure out how to fund the rest of that project.
Okay. Thank you. Well, thank you again for presenting this, and I look forward to seeing more in the future and getting all this together and having it come before the council so then the citizens can see all this online, too.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Maniscalco?
Yeah, I was going to jump in. We're probably going to be doing a bake sale to fund the rest of Pleasant Valley.
We're doing a what sale? A bake sale?
I'm not there to take my collections.
I know. You want to collect a bake sale?
Either that or we're going to pass a plate.
Sure, pass a plate. Okay.
So...
Andy's going to bake organic blueberry muffins.
I think, you know, I think that looking at the plan that Mr. Stetson's put together with the contractors is very valuable for us to take the time to take a step back and look at it from a data perspective. That said, I think, at the end of the day, no pun intended, where the rubber hits the road is how are we going to actually pay for all of this, which is going to be a bigger challenge for all of us moving forward. The town historically has always bonded and essentially financed the cost of roads, which is certainly a way to make that occur. With roads being a 30-year-plus asset, you know, that makes a lot of sense from a financing perspective. It's something that we will have to have those conversations about and discuss moving forward. I know we've also had a lot of conversations at the Capitol Committee level of trying to pay-as-you-go type scenario. That being said, I think some of these numbers are to the point where we probably couldn't afford to pay as we go, and we would probably see some pretty significant deterioration within our roads if we just did that alone. So, just something to put in the back of your heads and think about as we move forward. Probably that's one of our only choices is to make a very big impact would be to continue to finance roadwork moving forward, but it's something that we will be working on and laying out for you in the not-too-distant future to discuss and consider.
Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. Thank you, Mr. Stetson, for your department's hard work and your hard work. Appreciate it. Moving on is item 13C. Counselor Kazakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion to reconsider vote on the adoption of the registrar's voters' updated polling district map. Now therefore be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the recommendations of the registrar's voters to realign the borders of districts 2, 3, 4, and 5 as shown on the attached map. District 1 realignment was approved by the Connecticut General Assembly under Connecticut General Statute 169A and published by the Secretary of the State on November 11, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Paterna. Is there any discussion on this item? Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Seems to be a pattern we're forming here tonight, but... So, I just wanted to state that I'm not in favor of this change of the map. I'm not in favor of change if there's no good reason to do so, and I've been listening to everybody who's spoken about it, and I still don't quite understand what the impetus is for the change. Counselor Kazakowski and I have spoken against this, and we've heard nothing from others as to why it makes sense at this time. So, also, we've asked for an updated map to be posted to the website so others could view this, some of the details around the properties that this would affect. And lastly, this comes at a cost to the taxpayers that I think is unnecessary and unwarranted and splits multiple neighborhoods right down the middle. So, but on the other hand, if we were to, I would be interested in having a conversation if we wanted to possibly consolidate polling districts. You know, we have a couple of polls that are within a mile of each other that I think might make sense to consider consolidating to save the taxpayers' money instead of splitting and then trying to change the map for reasons that are still unclear to me. So, I'm just not in favor of this proposal, so...
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Any other council members? Counselor Kazakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to also say that I'm not in support of this adoption of the redistricting map. I think I would provide some clarification for Counselor Campbell. I think the impetus was to have a nice map with clean, straight lines. By doing so, what happens is a lot of the streets that are affected by this redistricting are going to be split, where one side of the street is going to be going to one polling district, and the neighbor across the street where possibly the driveways, you know, are exactly opposite side of the street will be going to a different, will now be going to a different polling location. So, I don't know if that makes a whole lot of sense to me. I just also want to say that redistricting in this way has really no added value to the town. All it does is provide, you know, creates new costs, both explicit with costs of creating maps and mapping and printing and mailing, and also some... So but on the other hand, if we were to, I would be interested in having a conversation if we wanted to possibly consolidate polling districts. You know, we have a couple of polls that are within a mile of each other that I think might make sense to consider consolidating to save the taxpayers money instead of splitting and then trying to change the map for reasons that are still unclear to me. So I'm just not in favor of this proposal, so.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Any other council members? Counselor Kozakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to also say that I'm not in support of this adoption of the redistricting map. I think I would provide some clarification for Counselor Campbell. I think the impetus was to have a nice map with clean, straight lines. By doing so, what happens is a lot of the streets that are affected by this redistricting are going to be split where one side of the street is going to be going to one polling district and the neighbor across the street where possibly the driveways, you know, are exactly opposite side of the street will be going to a different, will now be going to a different polling location. So I don't know if that makes a whole lot of sense to me. I just also want to say that redistricting in this way has really no added value to the town. All it does is provide, you know, creates new costs, both explicit with costs of creating maps and mapping and printing and mailing and also some implicit costs of added confusion and frustration for us, the people and residents that, and voters that, you know, are going to have to go to a new polling location. And I just want to say if the goal is to have a map with nice, clean, straight lines on it, there are other mapping techniques that can be applied to achieve that same goal without creating redistricting properties for really no good reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kozakowski. Any other councilors? Counselor Paterna?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I want to make sure I'm clear and could we have the registrar come up to the?
Absolutely. Susan Suze, please come up.
I guess the first question I would have is how many voters are in the town of South Windsor?
Give him a minute, Andy.
Yeah.
Please state your name so we know who's speaking.
I am Sue Burner, Republican registrar.
I've got to turn it on. There you go.
Hi, I'm Sue Burner, Republican registrar.
Sue Larson, Democratic registrar. There's about seventeen thousand five hundred voters.
Okay. So then, and many of our districts, the way they're drawn right now, there are people on the same street who are going to different polling places. We use streets, we use streets all the time as boundaries?
Yeah.
Okay. And then of those sixteen or seventeen thousand, how many, and we have no control over what the state has done in terms of redistricting District One.
Correct.
That's up to the state. How many, in the change that you're proposing, and I consider you two the experts, how many people would be affected by this change in terms of numbers of voters?
The impact is less than one hundred households.
Less than one hundred?
Closer to, between fifty to seventy-five. And you figure on average, there's probably two voters in the house.
Right. So of the sixteen thousand plus voters, we're talking fifty to seventy-five that might be impacted by this change? You know, I can just say I can support what you're trying to do and I will support this motion. Thank you for your information and for your work.
Yeah, just, you know, the bulk of the voters that are being impacted are in the District One area where you have several streets that are all being moved over into District One. So that's where, you know, so the costs of redoing the maps, the costs of doing the letters to the household, we're going to be having that one way or another, if only for District One, that all the costs are there. So it's not going to cost the town any more money for that.
Counselor Evans?
Thank you. I just really want to say thank you for your great explanation through three meetings now of why we're doing this. I think you both have done a great job explaining the reasons why, also working together to come up with this new type of map. You know, as was just mentioned, the maps need to be redone regardless because of District One. So this would be the best time to make those changes if we're making those changes. So I think that's a great reason to do so. Previously, I know even, I know Counselor Lidecker is not here tonight, but her neighborhood previously was split directly down LaFol Boulevard. So someone living on one side of the street voted at the high school, someone living on the other side of the street voted at PV. So that was happening with the old map. And she said there was no, you know, big issue with that between the neighborhoods. And I think what we've done is we've looked at more main roads to divide and splitting them that way. The only question I had was in these changes with sending households to different polling locations, are we creating any type of burden on one polling location versus another? Like is a large number moving to one that wasn't previously or is it pretty much where it was?
No. The only school that's going to get impacted is Pleasant Valley because there's a big shift from District Five over to Pleasant Valley School, District One. But that should only impact them for approximately a year, basically until the new school opens up. Once that opens up, we think that, you know, the new Pleasant Valley school is going to be more than able to handle the number of voters.
So then does that kind of even out the rest of them because so many are moving to Pleasant Valley?
You're taking a large group out of Timothy Edwards. That's where the biggest one comes from. And so, and the ones that are being added to Timothy Edwards, nowhere near the amount of people that are being taken out.
Okay. And that, and just to point out, not questioning you, but that is out of our control. So that was a state decision to move those residents to Pleasant Valley. So that, I just, I think this is the appropriate time to make these changes and I really commend you both for coming up with this plan. So thank you.
Any other comments from the councilors? Not seeing any. I want to thank you for your hard work and I know that this map and this discussion was done years ago with a committee that was formed and looked over the town for various reasons. And the roads that you've chosen are main roads that would be splitting the, dividing the voting districts. And presently, we have Pleasant Valley Road is divided, folks across the street from each other, one is District One and one is District Three. Is that correct?
Yes.
It is. And so also, you're going to just have to change the maps anyways because District One is being redone per states, statutes, and however they did with the census. So the cost is already there, so it's no extra cost to the town, none at all. And you're the experts in this field and I thank you for your time and your energy and effort in bringing this forward to us. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you.
So is there a second? Did I do a second? Yes, I did. I did. Okay. Make sure I do the seconds. Don't want to mess up on that. Sorry. Got to get my seconds in there. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Can we have a roll call, please? Counselor Evans?
Yes.
Counselor Lidecker?
Not here.
Counselor Campbell?
No.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Kozakowski?
No.
Deputy Mayor King?
Yes.
Counselor Kowalski?
No.
No, what did you say?
No.
Counselor Paterna?
Yes.
And Mayor Pendleton?
Yes.
All right. We have one, two, five yeses and three nos. Thank you. And the motion carries. Moving on now, we're going back to the beginning of the agenda. Those were our three that we needed to move forward. Going back, we are now on the adoption of minutes of the previous meeting. And Counselor Evans? We don't have any minutes from the previous meeting. Oh, I just caught my eye on that. So there's none to approve. So moving on, on to number nine, communications from liaisons, officers and boards directly responsible to the council. Counselor Paterna?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I serve as the liaison to the Senior Advisory Committee at the Senior Center. And I attended a meeting recently and they have a couple of projects that they are asked questions about and have concerns about. One is the Geisler Plaza Project, questioning why that hasn't moved ahead. Another is a long discussion on economic development in South Windsor and then questions about when the pickleball courts will be completed. That's all. Thank you.
I love it. I love it. Okay. Counselor Evans?
Thank you. First, as liaison for the Human Relations Commission, I wanted to invite MJ Hockenberry, Mary Justine Hockenberry, up to share some information about an upcoming event.
Thank you, Counselor Evans. I'm here to represent the Human Relations Commission. First, I'd like to say that in the last four years, this commission has grown, has sustained and is continually available for all those in our community for any type of help with equity, any type of help with things that are happening in the neighborhoods around us, our community. And we also work with other human relations commissions throughout the state. What we're going to do is we're going to have a standing in solidarity with the Ukraine. This is close to my heart since my family is there. Come join the Human Relations Commission for candlelight visuals supporting the Ukraine. We're going to be having this on Wednesday, March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, from seven to eight P.M. It's going to be here at the Town Hall. If there are any changes that will happen, they will be on the HRC site on the Facebook page. Also, it will be on the Town Hall page. We will be having speakers from the Ukrainian church in Hartford, the Archdeities, not only of the Greek Orthodox, but also from the Roman Catholic. We will be inviting all of our churches and human relations commissions from around the state of Connecticut. And most importantly, we invite all of the community Ukrainians who are here in the town of South Windsor, Polish, Russian, who are going through such a hard time right now that we would like to support them and I hope that you will join me. Thank you.
Thank you, MJ Hockenberry. Thank you. Counselor Evans?
Additionally, they have a photo contest running through the Human Relations Commission. There's information about that on the HRC website and Facebook page. The artwork will be displayed at the library and there will be some awards presented by not only the mayor, but some other individuals and groups amongst the town. So there's that to look forward to. Additionally, the, sorry. So I report for the Art Commission and the Social Justice Racial Equity Commission. Happy to note that we do have a new member to be approved for the Art Commission tonight. I really do hope that we can continue to find individuals to fill the seats on both commissions. At this point, the Art Commission has one seat to be filled by Democrat nominated individual and three seats, four seats to be dominated by the Republican Town Committee. The Social Justice, we do still have one Democratic seat open on that commission. There are also three Republican seats still available on that commission. So I really do look to the Republican Town Committee and perhaps to our minority leader to have a conversation with his, you know, Town Committee to see if we can try to find some individuals to really fill those spots because the Social Justice Racial Equity Commission, one individual and that commission can begin to meet. The Art Commission, we just need two more individuals and that commission can start to meet. So really just hope we can find people to fill those spots. Thank you.
Counselor Evans, may I ask you? These are registered voters within those party affiliations, but they do not necessarily need to be an affiliate or on any party committee, just that type of registered voter that can go to or contact you or contact Counselor Kozakowski, which the names can be forwarded on for their nominations.
Yep, absolutely. And to be clear, the Democratic nominated seat for both commissions remains to be an unaffiliated individual. Two seats for the Republican nominated, sorry off the top of my head, is one Republican, registered Republican and two non-Republican affiliated, non-affiliated seats for the Art Commission, the same, two and two. So any individuals who are unaffiliated, Republican, Democrat, we really are looking for individuals to get involved. Actually, there's no Democratic seats still available, just unaffiliated to be nominated by Democrats. So truly just reach out to whoever you feel comfortable having a conversation with to get more information and we can connect you with the right people to have that conversation.
And is this on our town website where they can read what both of these commissions are meant to do? Is that there yet?
Yep. So there actually was some information put out by our town manager a few weeks ago. We put it, he tweeted it. I also shared it. I know the mayor shared it at some point. Human Relations has also shared it. So it is out there on social media. The more any of us as councilors can share that information as well. I know Counselor Campbell had a great idea that perhaps we put it on the screen. You know, there might be some information with the digital screen we have right on the main road down here. So just any way to more get that information out there, so.
Great idea, Counselor Campbell. Wow. All right. Thank you, Counselor Evans. I'm impressed. Okay. Counselor Campbell, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm the liaison to the Library Board and I attended the, I attended my first meeting last week with Director Mary Etter and she was very gracious as also giving me a tour of the library. So I don't really have much to report from the Library Board, but I do want to give a shout out to the library in general. They have been open almost the entire time of the pandemic. They shut down briefly in order to put some safety protocols in place, but they have been open for the last two years. And unbeknownst to me, I did not realize that the number of visitors they normally get before pre-pandemic was anywhere between seven hundred and fifty and a thousand visitors a day they get. It's an amazing, I know, I know, you know, a lot of people already know this, but there are so many programs that they offer and this is one I did not know. It's the VITA Tax Assistance Program for adults. You can actually go to the library and they will help you prepare your taxes. So there's many tech programs and then in the Friends Room, every weekend for the next year is booked with art shows. So if you're looking for a nice art show, go to the Friends Room. They have, the walls are covered with beautiful displays of art. And also, I did not know this, pre-pandemic, they held concerts upstairs in the, I guess that would be the front side of the library. There's that little atrium area on the front. They haven't done that lately because of the pandemic, but soon they will be getting concerts back in there. So I encourage everybody to go out to the library and experience all the wonderful programs that it has. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Oh, you're excited over that Library Board. That's great. I love it. I love, thank you, Mary Etter. It's exciting stuff. Anyone else have anything to report? Okay. I do. Patriotic Commission, I would like to announce that the Patriotic Commission has a banner program. And the banner program recognizes veterans that live in South Windsor, living veterans that live in South Windsor. Right now, they're recognizing World War II, Korea and Vietnam. We have twenty-three confirmed sponsors. That means someone else has sponsored or someone has sponsored the banners. And there are twenty-one banners that are in possession of the Patriotic Commission right now. So they have two more banners that they could fill with the twenty, with the two extra sponsors. So if anyone would like to bring forward a name of a veteran of World War II, Korea or Vietnam, you can contact the Patriotic Commission on our town website. Then they also have the essay contest, which is up and running and that is online. It's at the elementary schools and it's also on the Board of Ed. The deadline for that is March eighteenth. And the end, for the banner program, it's the end of March, actually. And going forward on May twenty-first, Armed Forces Day is still going forward at Nevers Road Park. So thank you Patriotic Commission for all your volunteers and the hard work that you do. And moving on, not seeing anyone else. Moving on to number ten, reports from committees. Are there any reports from committees? Counselor Evans?
Thank you. I just want to report on the two committees that we've been talking about consistently. Strategic Planning Committee, which tonight we have some names to add, which I'm really excited that that committee can now move forward because we'll have enough to meet a quorum. We are still waiting on two student individuals that should be coming, I believe, next week. And there are two, are two Republican names that could be moved forward. I'm not really sure why we're holding off on them. I think that, you know, that would be great if we could really have it as a full-body commission rather than holding off. But my plan was to hand it over to Deputy Mayor King tonight, just as, you know, I've kind of filled that role of finding the bodies to fill the seats and great people to do this job.
Of which you've done a great job. Thank you.
We'll pass that over. And then the others, the Park and Rec Facilities and Implementation Planning Committee. Excited to say that we do have a planned meeting for March tenth. So that committee is going to start working on finding a new home for the Park and Rec facility. So looking forward to that.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other reports? Not seeing any. Moving on to the consent agenda. Oh, is there or no? Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yes, I just want to report that the Open Space Task Force met today for the first time in a few months. And I just want to say that we've been looking at, we started reviewing the potential list of priority properties for acquisition for open space. It was kind of a first cut, first review of identifying a few. And I look forward to further evaluation of those properties and possibly bringing them to the council for approval.
Great. Thank you. We're good? Okay. Moving on to item eleven, the consent agenda. Counselor Evans?
Motion to approve agenda items eleven AA through eleven AC as a first reading on the consent agenda.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Any discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Moving on, there are no second readings. Eleven B, small letter B, there is no second reading. And letter C miscellaneous, there is none. Number twelve, unfinished business, there is none. Number thirteen, we're on now. Number 13, we're on now with 13D. Counselor Paterna?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know there's a resolution on the agenda tonight, but the contract negotiations have not been fully completed. So I'd like to postpone this until we actually get the completion of the contract, and then Assistant Town Manager Vanessa Perry will report back to us.
Is there a second to postpone, 13D? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. 13E, resolution, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Evans again, please.
13E, resolution appointing Mindy Lewis to the Strategic Planning Committee. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Mindy Lewis to the Strategic Planning Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Counselor Lopez, 13F, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. F, resolution appointing Karen Wagner D to the Strategic Planning Committee. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Karen Wagner for the Strategic Planning Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor? Aye. 13G, Counselor Gamble?
Point of order, Mayor, you didn't ask for any nays.
Oh, is there any nays? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, thank you. I did ask for a second though, right? Okay, just making sure we got that. Okay. All those in favor on the, it was 13F, correct? Okay. And all those in favor, please, again, and any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Could we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Evans?
Yes.
Counselor Gamble?
No.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Kozakowski?
No.
Deputy Mayor King?
Yes.
Counselor Kobowski?
No.
Counselor Paterna?
Yes.
And Mayor Pendleton?
Yes.
All right. Five yes and three nos.
The motion carries, thank you. Thank you for putting that out to me, I appreciate it. 13G, Counselor Gamble?
Resolution appointing Phil Richards to the Strategic Planning Committee. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Phil Richards to the Strategic Planning Committee.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not seeing any, the motion carries. 13H, Deputy Mayor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution appointing Daniel Chavez to the Park and Recreation Facility Planning Commission. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Daniel Chavez to the Park and Recreation Facility Planning Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Paterna. Is there any discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not seeing any, the motion carries. Now we are on 13I, correct? Okay, this is a discussion item of the FY 2023 Budget Calendar. We all received a copy of the budget calendar. Mr. Maniscalco and Ms. Serna, thank you for helping us with this and getting this all squared away. Does anyone have any comments concerning the budget calendar? Okay, Counselor Gamble?
In Chairman Zimmerman's remarks, he had said something about a joint meeting with the Town Council, either online or in person. Can we clarify which that is?
It is in person in Alt 6 on March 23rd at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Paterna?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the Town Council and Mr. Maniscalco, the question is, we have a date set up of May 2nd for the final budget voting, and that is actually Eid El Fatihr, a very important religious holiday. And I wonder if we could move that date to the next night, the Tuesday, the 3rd, instead of conflicting with that holiday?
We would just need to check rooms and stuff of that nature, but we can certainly try to see what we could do to work around that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Man, I'm sorry, Mr. Maniscalco, could we also go with that just to make sure to see what it says with the charter? To make sure, because this would have to be a special meeting, and the charter may state that it's a regular meeting that it has to be approved at? I'm not sure of that wording.
I don't believe it says it has to be at a regular meeting or a special meeting. I think we could do it at either one. I just think, if I remember correctly, it just says a date that it has to be approved by.
Okay. I just wanted to check on that to verify that, that's all. You don't have to do that right now, I don't think.
Yeah, that's okay, we'll check and get a date and everything else lined up for you guys, and we'll let you know when that is.
And if it's good to go with the date in the clearing of the room and in the charter, if we could get a consensus from the council or questions on that? Consensus on the council to change it to the 3rd?
Sure.
Thumbs up?
Thumbs up, yeah.
Thumbs up?
I do, I do have one more question, sorry.
I'm not gonna leave ya, I gotcha, don't worry. You know, I'm not gonna leave ya. I'm just trying to stick to the 3rd, that's all.
Okay.
So if we can get a consensus, yes, on the 3rd and changing that, fantastic. So Mr. Maniscalco, you have a go to change it to the 3rd if it's allowable to do. If we have the room, if we have the wording in the charter, and so on and so forth. Good? Okay, now we'll go to Counselor Gamble.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So can, will you be able to change once you have it confirmed and then resend this out to us?
Yes, we will.
Okay. Oh, so there are, there are subcommittee meetings that are also gonna be taking place sort of in, in between these other ones? Is, are those, are those dates finalized yet, when the budget subcommittee will be meeting?
Yes, the working subcommittee meetings, the working group, the budget working group, subcommittee, it's not a subcommittee, it's a working group.
Working group, I'm sorry.
Okay. The budget working group, yes, has come up with dates with, Counselor Kobowski is on the working group. And Counselor Lopez, yes, and we will be meeting on Wednesdays. We're trying to meet on the day after and before, so we can look at the departments, and there's always a game plan on how to do that, yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. So I can, I can fill in the blanks there, all right.
They don't need to be on here, because that's our working group that we just, you know what I'm saying? We'll report back, though, at each of our meetings. Okay? Okay. Don't worry, call me if you have any more questions, okay? Counselor Kozakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just so to clarify, if councilors have comments or questions about the budget, should we channel them to the working group? Or to the Town Manager, or how, what do we?
You can send them to the Town Manager, you can send them to your person that's on your party, and they can bring them forward at the working group? Absolutely. Because what happens is Mr. Maniscalco is in the working group with us, and we go over the questions at that time and look for the answers and see what he can come up with. And yes, he'll email the questions out to the council with an answer for all of us to see.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions concerning the calendar? Not seeing any? Okay. We'll move on. We are now on item 13J, setting a time and a place for the public hearing. Counselor Evans?
Resolution setting a time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the proposed Board of Education budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby sets Monday, April 4th, 2022 at 8:00 p.m. in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall, 1540 Sullivan Avenue, South Windsor, Connecticut, as the time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the proposed Board of Education budget for a fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Is there a second? Thank you, Counselor Paterna. And any discussion on this? Not seeing any, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, the motion carries. Moving on to 13K, Counselor Evans?
13K, resolution appointing William Myers to the Strategic Planning Committee. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints William Myers to the Strategic Planning Committee.
Is there a second? Thank you, Counselor Kobowski. And any discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not seeing any, the motion carries. 13L, Counselor Evans?
Resolution appointing Lindsay Ruscheck to the Strategic Planning Committee. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Lindsay Ruscheck to the Strategic Planning Committee.
Is there a second? Thank you, Counselor Kozakowski. And is there any discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not seeing any, the motion carries. 13M, Counselor Kozakowski?
We didn't add that to the agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, and neither with the N either, or is that there? No, thank you. Okay. And item 14 is passage of ordinance. Counselor Kobowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 14A, resolution adopting the proposed illicit discharge and connection sewer water ordinance. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby adopts the proposed illicit discharge and connection stormwater ordinance as shown in Exhibit A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Counselor Kozakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanna thank the Town Manager and Public Works Department, Mr. Stetson and his team and other town staff that contributed to this. I hope I wasn't too much of a thorn in anybody's side with all my comments and questions. I just recognize the importance of a ordinance like this. An ordinance like this, while it was many pages, a little confusing, and used, kind of, it was very verbose, but essentially what it does, it says that the town recognizes that it's bad to pollute or to pour pollutants into our storm system, into our water courses and drains. So, and it provides the town a mechanism to correct those measures and to stop it from happening in the future. So I think those are some very good things, and I'm proud to be part of the creation and critiquing of that ordinance. So thank you very much.
Pat him on the back, please. Good job. Is there a second? We did a second, yes, okay. Any more discussion, Counselor Paterna?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank Kozakowski for his hard work in clearing this up, because it was kind of a...
Absolutely, good job.
It was kind of difficult to grasp in the beginning, so thank you very much.
And also to that note, I know that Counselor Lidecker also contributed to the, to that process too, so I don't wanna leave her out of the, out of the loop. Thank you.
Share that with her, there you go. He's turning red, I love it, okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not seeing any, the motion carries. Item 15, public input on any matter. I'm sorry, public input on any matter shall not exceed 30 minutes. Be recognized by the mayor. The speaker shall approach the lectern, give their names and addresses, and the speaker shall avoid any personal attacks or imputing or alleging improper motive to any person. The speaker may address the council on any item. The speaker shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time? Going one more time, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time? Third time, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time? Not seeing any, we'll continue on. Item 16 is communication from the council. Anyone have communications? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor King?
The only communication I had is, I just wanted to take a second just to shout out Counselor Evans, the Counselor Kozakowski, for putting together and doing all the work in regards to the committees. I mean, that's a huge, both have jobs, both have children, lives. I appreciate that. I know a lot went into calling our residents, finding out if they wanted to be a part of it, so on and so forth. And I didn't want that to be missed. Sometimes when we have committees and opportunities and these things come together, people don't see the hard work that goes behind the scenes. And you guys, unbeknownst to the rest of our residents, put it in. You sent us the emails, you let us know, and I'm appreciative of that. And I just wanted that to be on the record, that you guys put in the time, you put in the work. And I look forward to hearing everything that these committees have to put together. So again, shouts out to both of you, appreciate it.
Great teamwork, thank you. And moving on, thank you. Does anyone else have communications from the council? Not seeing any. Moving on to executive session, Deputy Mayor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved that we go into executive session to discuss the South Windsor Non-Supervisor Professional Employees Union Contract. I'd like to invite the Town Manager, Michael Maniscalco, as well as the Assistant Town Manager, Ms. Perry, and Assistant Town Manager, Mr. Roberts, as well as anyone else that we deem that's necessary for that.
Is there a second? And any discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, the motion carries. We will be adjourning from executive session this evening. Thank you, South Windsor residents and businesses, and stay safe and good night.